They're all on Sunday, Sunday.
And you know.
I'm going to the beach or rented a beach house. You know, Sunday. I just didn't sound like a family getaway. It's like traveling, but not.
I've always wanted a beach.
It's a it's a. Yeah.
That's like my.
We had a we had a house up in Jenner.
Oh, generous.
Yeah, in general, it's nice too, but this is we only rented this one.
Okay, so I have some friends here.
Yeah.
So they've never they invited my daughters.
I already don't like them for you.
They have tons of living room.
It's it's funny living in this area. So like, we are not like. And it's funny to hang out with people that are good means are so far above what our means are. And it's like, it's not a big deal, but it's like, but it's interesting to see it in action up close. It's like, oh, that's what it's like to be.
Oh, yeah.
You know, to have 200 million.
I can do. I went to this.
Right.
Summer and it is and I was I met someone I was like, oh, so hey, what you guys did. We took.
Yeah.
And I said.
Okay. Ready, go.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, this is the other Tiburon Joint Disaster Advisory Council, October 15, 2004. It is now Friday, April 4th, and we're going to get started. That is called order, and we will proceed with an open forum. Anyone in the audience, so we recognize almost everybody in the audience. Uh, if you have something to say right now. Jane would Jane is on the Belvedere City Council.
Do you want me up here? Okay, I think my voice is probably louder than. Okay, so, um, yes, I'm on the Belvedere City Council and I, um, will become mayor in December and what my goal as mayor is going to be on, um, we are newly adopted emergency operation plan and hazard mitigation plan. Uh, both plans, um, are, I think county and definitely part of the Tiburon and Tiburon Peninsula. But we're going to be looking at, um, where Belvedere fits in and how these documents, translate to actual actions for Belvedere. So, um, I've asked Dr. Cromwell to sit on the, um, the committee, working committee that I'll be putting together. And, um, as well as some other volunteers from the community and, um, we will keep you informed of what goes on and what kinds of issues we're faced with and, uh, let you know what what happens as we go along over the next few months. So I just want to.
Do you have representatives from the police and fire?
I don't have anybody yet.
Okay.
I have to wait till I'm mayor, then I can do it.
That might be something you should think about because obviously those services are very, very. All of them.
I don't know. How do you know?
You're just the red light.
That's on.
So consider it.
Absolutely.
And and, um, I'm looking forward to it, but I think you'll need some coordination. I'm sure you're you already said you're going to include evacuation, which needs a lot of work. Uh, so good, good for you.
Yeah, so I'm excited about it and, um, if anybody, all you who have so much knowledge, we're open to hearing anything and any feedback and we'll keep an open dialogue.
So I just want to welcome you so much, uh, to our disaster advisory committee. Um, we would love to work with you and be a resource and help in any way we can, and I will too. And, uh, almost congratulations on being mayor. I'm very excited.
And I threw that in there is because I can't I'm I'm not doing anything until, but I wanted you to know that the council is behind this effort.
Perfect. Thank you.
Have to say, I'm not sure if congratulations or condolences.
Yeah.
Those of us that have been there.
And Jane, if you would like to invite your group, your working group to come down, I would love to do an EOC incident command system training for all of you and kind of show you how the EOP works through the EOC so you can get a little background on it, too.
That would be terrific.
You just let me know when.
Okay, thanks, Lori.
And they're certainly welcome to kind of these meetings also, as you see, we're not.
We, uh, we did interview two candidates last night for the empty, uh, place representing Belvedere. Um, and there were a lot of questions we had about, um, moving forward, so we postponed it for one month, so I apologize. I'm here if you need to take a vote, I'm happy to represent Belvedere as the city council member. But I don't see any votes today, but, um, just in case, I could I could step in for that if you needed. But definitely in November, we'll be able to fill our spot.
Good. Any questions? Okay, thanks Jane for showing up. Uh, we will go ahead then with an open forum. Anyone else in the audience have any comments? Uh, if you do, and it involves something on the agenda, we will consider at that point. Otherwise, we will most likely agendize the issue for a subsequent meeting. Okay, seeing none, we'll move ahead with our presentations. And now, Lori, you want introductions now or okay?
Yeah, I'd like to go ahead and move the introductions up in the agenda, uh, before we go do the presentation, because our presentation today is special. We're going on a field trip to the parking lot outside. And so before we go outside with our two newcomers, I thought we should get to know them a little bit. Um, so I would like to introduce Adam Brolin and Colin Crawford. They're our newest members of the Disaster Advisory Council. Um, and I'd like to have them each say a little bit about themselves. I could sit here and rave about each of them individually for 15 minutes. They're that great. Um, but I thought maybe they might like to speak a little bit. Uh, Adam, do you want to go first? Just little introduction?
I, as mentioned, my name is Adam Brolin, um, a retired firefighter after 30 years, retired as deputy chief of operations. I have just a great interest in what we're doing here today. It's been my life's passion. Um, and I'm excited to meet my fellow council members and what we're doing, and I look forward to participating in the process and and really coming up with some, you know, substantial things that move the needle forward in the community. That that's really my goal. So, but that's so thank you.
I would just add one thing about Adam. Adam has been lived in Belvedere before he moved to Tiburon over the past year or two and has been extremely active in our Belvedere block app program. Because he has been well versed, much better versed than any of the rest of us. So he has been very helpful. Thanks for all of it. I hope you continue doing that, and we're going to keep you on the Belvedere block app program, even though you don't live there.
Okay, you cannot have Adam back. He's ours now. He's in Tiburon. And I also want to call out some of his other experience. Uh, he has a background in emergency operations and running, I believe, an emergency operations command center. Is that correct? Right, so he has run an EOC and, um, this is part of what I'm repeating from the town council meeting. But that kind of knowledge and that way of knowing what to do when there's a true emergency is invaluable to our planning. And Adam, I just want to say welcome and I'm so excited to see you as part of this, uh, Disaster Advisory Council. And I'm so excited that you're now in Tiburon.
Thank you so much, Adam. And also just a shameless plug, Adam's going to team up with me to teach some future get ready classes and we're going to have a lot of fun with it. So when you see scheduled get ready classes, please make sure you attend. It's going to be an event for sure. Um, and then I'm going to segue that. Adam did a lot of block captain work in Belvedere. And that's the perfect segue to Colin Crawford, who has seriously organized the Delmar neighborhood, has worked on communications out there and has a great block captain program going in Delmar. Colin?
Yeah, I've lived in, uh, Delmar for about the last 14 years. I'm semi-retired, you know. You know, kids are out of the house, thank goodness. And, uh, I've been a director on the Delmar Association for for most of that time. And as Laurie said, we have a major focus on trying to educate our community around disaster preparedness. You know, we have, you know, focused on, you know, regular communications. For example, over the summer, we sent out a series of, you know, educational emails, you know, around different aspects of disaster preparedness, just to try and keep getting people up up to speed and making sure that they they are ready for something we we hope never never happens. So I'm very much looking forward to, uh, bringing some of my past media experience and, you know, work on the Delmar Association, you know, to this group.
Well, both of you, welcome, and we certainly look forward to your involvement. Before we go further, um, Lori, are we straight now on who sits in what chair? This has been a controversy for several months now. And it has been reorganized. Is Jerry still on the DIACU?
Yes.
Okay, and he was aware of this?
Yes.
Okay. So we're we're happy otherwise.
We're still short of a Belvedere person, and that's what Jane was saying, is we're working on filling that one other spot.
Okay, so after that's appointed.
Yes.
We will be full force and where people should be.
Correct.
Good, all right.
Yes.
Finally. Okay, well, Jane, I'll tell you, I I will say one thing for Jane. Uh, she is more, um, faithful to attending these meetings than any other Belvedere city councilman in the past, I have to admit. So, well, thank you very much for for getting involved and being interested in this stuff. And I, part of our job is to get the rest of the community interested, and that's tough. Okay, um, now, I, so do you want to go outside now and?
So I would like to introduce our guest presenter, and that is Captain Jared Yee. He has been overseeing the addition and update of our our fleet, all of our vehicles. And some of the resources that have been put onto these vehicles is amazing. And I don't want to spoil any of the fun here, but I'm going to turn it over to to Captain Yee. And we're going to go on a field trip outside.
Uh, before we go outside, I can just tell you a couple of things. I'm sure you're going to hear or feel them. Uh, aside from our cars being all, they were all white before we transitioned to black and white patrol cars for increased visibility. Uh, the lighting is much brighter and includes a variety of technology and public address systems. And we've geared some to better assist with, um, disaster preparedness.
Are all the all your cars equipped the same way now?
Uh, there's going to be a little period where they're going to be mismatched because we have about half of them that were built from one vendor and they're our older vehicles. So as we replace our vehicles annually, we will be having, um, they'll become more standardized with the same equipment.
And how about Belvedere's vehicles? Have they, do they have any plan to do the same thing for those?
Uh, speaking with their vehicle maintenance officer, the only thing I'm aware of is they are looking at a couple of, um, electric vehicles, but I don't believe they're due for another patrol vehicle until next fiscal year. So I don't know specifically if they plan on using the same equipment. We are, but they are looking at new vehicles.
Thank you. So you would like us to go outside?
Yeah, I'm giving, uh, Chief Wu a chance to respond because he's here via Zoom. And I thought I'd see if he had anything to say about the updating of the police.
Hi, I I didn't, uh, hi, can hope everybody can hear me. I did not hear Captain Eze or or Dr. Cromwell's question. It's very soft on my end. The volume's very low.
Um, so the question was, does Belvedere Police Department have any plans to update the fleet of cars they have to have any of these new features that Tiburon has?
Uh, well, in in a ideal world, the answer is yes. Uh, we do, we are planning to replace one of our vehicle, um, with a, uh, next year's budget with hopefully with an EV. Uh, and depending what kind of budgets we we have left, uh, we definitely think it's a great idea to incorporate the, uh, the siren system or or the the rat system, I guess, right, that Tiburon has. Um, hopefully that we could, uh, we have the budget for that.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Jason. Okay, and, uh, do you want to wait to talk until after we go out and?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, good. Well, let's.
So Chief Wu, we are stepping outside for this portion of it. Would you like me to FaceTime you?
Oh, that'd be wonderful. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I give postcards and want to make that escape. I think so.
Thank you. So why didn't Chief Wu say he didn't follow the sirens? The L red levels. Yeah. Hi, Chief. So, um.
Okay.
So you like Runham County?
Oh, yeah, yeah, it's just great, you know, nonstop, so much fun, no, it's good, it's fun, always something going on.
I just want to get it running first.
Sounds good to me.
Pull up a chair, let's, we've got another one. Okay.
Okay, and if I could just remind everybody, please, if you're gonna speak, to turn your microphone on, because that's the only way that they can hear on the Zoom end, and when I say "they," I mean Chief Wu. Thank you.
Okay. Well, that's an impressive vehicle, uh, thank you Lori for, and that's gonna be around Saturday. It's supposed to be red or not red? It is red. Well, that's good. So.
Uh, yes, I believe it is gonna be there on Saturday. And in addition to that vehicle, um, I think they're talking about bringing one more, and we're gonna have the mobile siren out there, uh, which will have voice PA system, uh, and siren, and we're gonna put that on display, so you can see how that could be used for evacuation also.
Uh, FYI, we are having an event on Saturday morning, and Lori's gonna talk about that in a few minutes.
So unless you haven't heard.
This Saturday, there's gonna be the Get Ready to Go 94920 event, uh, it's gonna be right here at Zelinski Park and in half of the parking lot, I hope that everybody can make it, I brought some flyers, and I believe I also emailed it also out to you last week, trying to spread the word, uh, to get everybody out there in the community, we're gonna have free tacos, shave ice, free bounce house, and face painting, and the most important thing is we're gonna have first responders and organizations that would respond in an emergency, they're gonna have displays, free giveaways, there's gonna be games and prizes, and we're gonna get everybody incredibly motivated to get themselves prepared for any kind of a disaster, and have a good time doing it.
Good. Hope it doesn't rain. Yeah, well, yeah. Any questions? Did we lose you?
I can move over.
So. Sit down, yeah. All right, so we will move on, any questions about any of that stuff, about the vehicle?
That was great.
That's an impressive, yeah, just, yeah, don't, don't get that thing after you, I think.
Impressive.
Well, we're on Great Shakeout, do you wanna talk about that, Lori?
The Great Shakeout was very, very downgraded today, the schools participated in that, uh, because we don't have working sirens, which Chief Pierce is gonna talk a little bit about, because we didn't have, uh, our sirens, we didn't make as big a to-do about it as we normally do, um, so hopefully next year, we'll be back on track, but today was the Great Shakeout, where everybody is encouraged to duck, cover, and hold, imagine that there was a big earthquake, and, um, think about personal preparedness, well.
Kim McGrath is our, the head of the region school district, uh, any comment?
My understanding for, uh, for the school district is on 10/17, at 10/17, we will hold, uh, our district-wide earthquake drill at that time, so hopefully that'll help some there, yeah.
Good, all right.
I thought it was 10/15 at 10/15 this year, so I stand corrected.
And our next item is creating, creation of a neighborhood coordinate, neighborhood coordination efforts, I, slash block captain task force, now, I'm not unfamiliar, I'm unfamiliar with this, Colin, is this something that you're gonna take on, is that, or already have taken on, or?
I think that Lori may have volunteered me for.
So I was gonna, I was gonna talk, I was gonna talk a little bit about it, I think Colin has inspired me to kinda get a task force to start looking more at neighborhood involvement, neighbors helping neighbors, and what he's done in, in the Delmar neighborhood is really impressive, um, Belvedere has always had great block captain program, uh, certain neighborhoods in Tiburon do have them up and running and are really good, but it's not across the board, and I'd like to form a task force, and yes, I kinda wanna volunteer Colin in this group, because what he's done is really impressive, um, but I'd like to create a task force to talk about neighborhood preparedness.
Maybe I could just touch on it a little bit.
Please.
You know, we started off trying to follow the, the process that Tom Cromwell had, had set up in, in, in Belvedere, and, uh, you know, to be honest, it was a bit of a struggle, you know, to get people to sign up to be block captains and to, to commit and really get around their, their neighborhood, so we've, we've sort of evolved it a little bit, and we've been really focusing on much more tight, uh, neighborly involvement, where a single neighbor goes out and invites the surrounding neighbors to come over for like a coffee evening, or, you know, wine or drink or whatever, whatever suits their particular, you know, personality, and we found that by focusing on a little bit more narrow areas, where only maybe half a dozen homes are involved with, with one, if you like, uh, individual or, or block captain, you know, we've got a much greater commitment than trying to make it too much of a formalized process, people were sort of put off a little bit about that commitment that they may have to, to follow through on, whereas they were a lot more receptive to just inviting their neighbors over, you know, looking how they could help, asking them how prepared they were, you know, all the normal things about utility shut-offs, et cetera, et cetera, so we, we certainly admire and, you know, uh, very supportive of what Belvedere has done on their, on their block captain programs, but we also want to look at a couple of other, maybe slightly more novel approaches as well, to see what, what works.
Very good, good.
Well, I want to.
One quick thing, the, uh, Colin, I could really use some help, we can talk off, uh, line about this, but it's been an issue in Paradise Cay, we're outside of, we're, we're out in the county, but it's, uh, it's, it's a challenge, and my experience with it is that everyone says, oh, we should have block captains, and then, as soon as it starts to get organized, they turn around and they say, well, here's what you should do, and you should do this, and you should do that, and you should do the other thing, and it just doesn't work.
I mean, I, I, I agree with you, I think what we really strive for is just neighbors getting to know neighbors.
Yeah.
A, a lot more better, and once, uh, when I first moved into Delmar, you know, I realized that even the, the people next to me hadn't really communicated or spoken to each other for a decade.
Right.
You know, so how are they going to help each other in, in an emergency if they don't really know each other, so that was really the foundation of, of our approach, doing everything we could to get the neighborhood together, get the neighbors to know each other, we did it through socials, and then through that, we would try and push out an education pro- program, of which, you know, the block captains, disaster prepared captains, whatever you want to call them, would, would be part of that, but, you know, at Delmar, we have about 259 homes, and, and we have about 80% of those who are active members of the association. You know, we've got databases, we've got different ways of communicating with them, we find, if we just keep talking to people on, on a regular basis, we can gradually educate them, but, you know, it is an uphill struggle.
Yeah, yeah.
We certainly all know that, I certainly won't take all the credit for organizing the Belvedere Block Captain Program, that was a task force of Claire McAuliffe and James Campbell and I about, I don't know, five or six years ago did it, um, we have an advantage, and we're a much smaller community, and so it's easier to get that sort of community up and running than Tiburon, and that's always been a bit of a problem with Tiburon, so good luck, and I appreciate your efforts, I can tell you that the easiest, the most difficult part about it actually is not organizing it, it's keeping it running, up and going, and keeping people interested and, and involved, so you only think of some exercises that you can do to keep people interested in what they're trying to do.
Well, Tiburon Town has been really trying to re-energize the, the neighborhood associations, you know, a number of them have sort of fallen into disrepair over, over the years, and I think it's Chris Wick, you know, I may not have got the name right, but at the town of Tiburon, she's been reaching out, you know, to all the different areas in Tiburon to try and build up that database, so if we can, you know, get access to the, the key people to, in which to communicate with the, the directors of these associations, we can work pretty closely with them in developing programs that are suitable for, for their particular neighborhoods.
Yeah, it certainly would be appropriate for both of us to work together, if we can help you do anything to get going, but then there's no reason we couldn't as a joint exercise, but probably would keep interest up.
So is there, is there any interest then in putting together a, a little working group to?
A working group for Tiburon, or both?
Or both, if we're gonna work together, maybe ideas for keeping things alive and well, and exercises, and?
Uh, it might be a little bit premature at this point, Lori, until we get something more organized in Tiburon, and then try to, try to take that on, but if I can be of any assistance to you, I'll be happy to come over and chat a bit, and whenever. Any other questions about, uh, neighborhood response group in Tiburon? Okay, we'll go ahead of the creation, creation of communication slash Alert Marin Task Force, working group, is that something else, or that's what, just what you talked about, I guess, you completed that?
So I was hoping to get a group together that could really help to market and promote Alert Marin, that's our emergency notification system, and we have, I think last check was 34% of our population has signed up to receive emergency notifications, and would like to see, uh, that grow by a lot, and so I was hoping to put together a group that could just help to promote and market this.
Yeah, I, I, Lori and I talked earlier, uh, I, I like to set, you know, targets, and if we can start with that 30-odd percent, and as a group, set a target over the next 12 months to try and elevate it up to a, a certain number, I think that gives everyone a goal to, to try and, you know, move towards, you know, as part of the communications in Delmar over the summer, I mean, we've gone out there and really pushed Alert Marin, the Marin Emergency Portal, et cetera, et cetera, and trying to get our, our neighbors, you know, to sign up, now, how do we measure that, that's something we, we'll, we'll have to look at, how do we actually know it's 34% as opposed to, to 50%, but I, I'm all in favor of, of setting clear goals of which we can move towards.
And I, can I add just real quick, so I'm happy to be part of that group, if that's the direction you wanna go in, um, alerting people is probably the most important thing we can do, because people have to know there's a danger, and have to know what the problem is, I mean, if you just give people a chance, they can take a lot of right decisions on their mind, on their own, so I, I think, I think getting that out is perfect, um, and then not just necessarily for this discussion, but the goals, and, and, and I think that's important too, at some point, not for this discussion, but we talk about maybe a strategic plan for what we want to achieve as a group here, because we're, I think we're re-energized now, and I think we're gonna go in a lot of different directions that are good, but maybe we should, again, not right now, but talk about what do we think this looks like in a year, what would be achievable that we could look back and say percentages we hit with Alert Marin, so, and I think that's a wonderful idea to get the percentage, and I'm, I'm 100% on board with helping out with that.
Yeah, I was just gonna echo, um, my colleague Adam Brolin's comments, I do think a strategic plan would be very helpful, or, you know, it doesn't have to be, uh, you know, a long planning effort, but just an idea, uh, uh, before we, uh, create a lot of ad hoc committees, to figure out where we're actually going, and how we're gonna join Belvedere and Tiburon together and maximize our time, we do have some new energy, and, uh, I think it's very exciting.
And, and I, yeah, I would agree, certainly, that should be at some point a cooperative effort between Belvedere and Tiburon, because we are basically one community when it comes to evacuation and disaster preparedness.
So I'll send out the strategic plan that we had come up with, um, I'm drawing a blank on the gentleman's name that was part of our disaster council.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I, I thought we had a plan that was, that we came up with.
Fairly recently adopted, um, and Alert Marin is something that we can measure very easily, because we can run a report and see how many people have signed up, um, and, and registered their information, so it's a very measurable, uh, thing, and because this is such a very important tool for the event of emergency evacuation especially, uh, I think it's something that we should definitely jump on.
And Alert Marin, it's quite appropriate that we use that for our primary warning system, the downside, unfortunately, that we hear a DC3, which is the County Disaster Committee, is that only somewhere around 30 or 35% of Tiburon-Belvedere is, has actually done, uh, gone out with a positive effort and signed in for Alert Marin, it's an opt-in system, unfortunately, rather than an opt-out, and people, including those in Belvedere and Tiburon, have not signed up for it, uh, to the extent they should.
So on.
Something else we have to read.
I'd like to point out Elaine Wilkinson in the back here, because Elaine is gonna be out there at the Get Ready to Go event, uh, with a computer, signing people up, or checking to make sure that they've registered their information, and so she'll be pushing Alert Marin and giving out prizes to anybody who takes the time to check their account and make sure they're signed up for Alert Marin.
Yeah, and if I may just add to that, is that we, we look at, when we have communities who want to do, um, a concerted campaign, we look at the baseline figure, um, of Zone Haven, which is, it, it kind of, it's not, it's never gonna be 100% accurate, because we have people who have moved in and out of the area, but we can pull that information from Zone Haven and look at the alert signups as they are now, 35% is very common across the county, just so you know, to kind of, maybe that puts your mind at ease, I'm not sure, but we can then, like, track how the alerts are, you know, are adding to the alert signups, what I will say from being in community so much, because that's my responsibility, is that when I'm talking to people, and I don't say, can I sign you up for Alert Marin, I say, can I check you're signed up for Alert Marin, most people will go, yes, I am, I am, and they're not, they're signed up for NICSOL, so there is still that community confusion over the two warning systems and the alert systems, of course, Alert Marin, it's about taking action, it's about doing something, it's telling you to do something, so we're really going hard and heavy, so to Adam's point, if we can't notify people, and I'm preaching to the choir here, we can't tell them to do anything, so this is the critical part of any campaign, whether it's the block captain level, or it's an all-community approach, or it's with the school district and utilizing power and square, not to just throw that at you, Kimber, I love that app, I, you know, there are many ways that we can do this, and we can provide quarterly metrics to show your progress, so really happy to partner, and fortunately Lori and I have a very good working relationship already, so.
But Elaine, why, why should we just push one or the other, either NICSOL or Alert Marin, why not push both of them for redundancy?
So, um, there is, I'm, I don't wanna talk out of turn, so I'm just going to say, I'm just gonna repeat myself, we want our county to sign up for the Alert Marin notification system, because it's telling them to do something, as you know, if people get over notified, they tend to switch off, now, the one that we want people to pay attention to is the Alert Marin, so I'm just gonna say that, um, and I don't want to go into the NICSOL kind of conversation right now, if that's okay.
So the creation of a task force, Adam, Colin? I'll throw myself in the ring. Sound good? Okay. I'll email you guys with the meeting for a task force meeting. We'll talk, we'll talk offline about the salary, Adam.
Free signup.
It's gonna be great, Adam, just don't worry.
There's gonna be prizes, Adam.
All right. Um, okay, and, uh, any other discussion about that issue, so we will move on to get ready staff training, Lori, I guess that's you first, and then me?
I just thought it would be worth mentioning that in the, um, month of September, we had all of the Belvedere City Hall, Public Works, some of the Police Department, as well as Tiburon Town Hall, Police Department, um, and Public Works came down, and we did Incident Command System Training, EOC Training, mixed in a little bit of get-ready personal preparedness, and then we broke, and Elaine did fire suppression and brought fire extinguishers, and we practiced putting out fires, and then Dr. Cromwell came in and taught first aid, AED, Narcan, CPR.
And.
And the Heimlich. So much, so the, all, both the city of Belvedere and town of Tiburon staff got very well educated in a, in a very large variety of things, and happy to do it for the Disaster Council, if the Disaster Council or the city or town councils wanna go through some training, the EOC is ready to go, and would love to do some additional trainings for, for you all.
And I will compliment your, your group, which I guess they are all employees of Belvedere-Tiburon, it was 25 people, 30 that, that day, so, and very. Belvedere-Tiburon. It was twenty-five people, thirty that that day, and very attentive, very interesting. And so far, this past year and a half now, we have given this same two-hour course, which is an offshoot of something the the Marin Medical Reserve Corps gave for years, and trained about two thousand people in Marin. This is two hours rather than four hours. And we have trained about two hundred residents in Belvedere and Tiburon. So we're really to a point where our residents are better trained than our block captains in Belvedere. So we're gonna have a course for the block captains in Belvedere sometime in the next, I don't know, month or so. There are two classes already scheduled for residents at the library in November. So we're making progress and working well. Good.
Awesome. Thank you.
Questions? Okay. Rich Pierce, you've been sitting there very occasionally.
About that.
Rich, as you all know, is our fire chief for both Belvedere and Tiburon. Yes, sir. What can we expect from you?
He's working? Okay, great. So back in two thousand thirteen, at the request of this council, the Fire District, along with the town and the city, secured two thousand dollars in funding to place emergency siren system on the peninsula, and back that up with an AM radio station. Since that time, there's been several changes to how that notification system works. Originally, it was a pager activation, and then it was a cellphone activation. So these, these changes has basically made our current system inoperable because they don't have the technology to activate it anymore.
That's been since the last assembly, correct?
No, there's been parts of it. So there was a couple of them, like the one at the fire station downtown, and the one at the fire station out at Station Ten still worked. But with the advent of MIRA Next Gen, there's an opportunity for us to be able to activate these from the ECC up at Los Galmos. And we think that's probably a better location, or even primarily EOC down here. Because this needs to be, when you send out these alarms or alerts, or specific information, you should have a very good procedure to go through, as Adam mentioned earlier. You don't want to send out a notification and not have any sort of directive to go along with it. So I think that's an important piece. It's my understanding that the people in the county are looking at alternative sources, alternative sirens, LRAD, you've heard about that before. I've been told by the manufacturer that it's not ideally designed for our topography here. So they wouldn't encourage us to do it at that point. The the thought process between the current sirens that we have, they're manual, they're mechanical, and they are old school. So it sounds like an old air raid siren when it finally goes off. And they do have a battery backup. And it's always been our our thought process that we wanted to kind of stay old school, not rely too much on technology. But I think with the advent of Alert Marin and some of the new technology to activate those sirens, that we should probably investigate that. So, so rather than wholesale discount what we already have, I would like to at least get your input on upgrading the notification system, that connection between the siren and the EOC and ECC to activate those sirens. Right now, I have an estimate of about forty thousand dollars. And our agreement that dates back to two thousand thirteen between the town, the city, and the district splits that up in a relatively fair, well, it is a fair breakdown. So it's fifty-two percent to the town, thirty percent to the district, and seventeen percent to the city is how that would be broken out. And this is an existing agreement.
The total is how much, Rich?
I'm looking at forty. So we, we're gonna do a little more research to make sure, but I got a quote of forty-one nine twenty-three.
And is that for all six sirens?
Yeah.
That's a great price.
Yeah.
So that would update all six of the existing sirens, so they would be?
I should say, I should say five at this point, because the one at Belvedere came out and was put up with a new LRAD.
But it would, and they would all be LRAD?
Yeah. No, no, no.
Not, okay, so.
Existing sirens.
So once we go through this forty thousand dollar change, the sirens will operate, but we still won't be able to talk over them. Is that right?
You won't be able to talk over them.
Okay.
And that was the sort of the thought behind it, is the LRAD is very directional. So you got one, one line of sight that you're gonna be able to hear that. And as it separates, you lose that.
You lose that capability, right?
Yeah.
I think the nice thing, if you don't mind me jumping in, is that those would be a great attention getter. Alert Marin would send out the message. And then we all just saw the, the new police cars that Tiburon has, plus we have the mobile siren, which is a PA system that could be mounted, that could get specific information out to a specific neighborhood if needed. But that, that's a great price.
So we would, we would then dispatch this mobile one and hopefully purchase a couple more mobile ones that we could dispatch around various neighborhoods for instructions to residents.
In addition to Alert Marin, I'd love to see more of those mobiles. And again, come out on Saturday, and you can see this, this mobile, and I'll bring it to you if you want. It can be used just for for notification, voice notification. Yeah. And the the siren, the meeting that wasn't. And that was great as a siren, but it's way better as a PA system. So we'll be using it just for the voice portion.
But forty thousand dollars sounds quite manageable. How long would it take?
Again, I'm trying to rally with the manufacturer, not the manufacturer, but the contractor, to see what timeline, timeline we're looking at.
Chief, is that the forty thousand is already budgeted? Is that, so this is, just just has to make a motion? Or how do we go about making sure these, this funding happens?
So the way this agreement works is it's based on District Board, Town Council, City Council. So they would have to approve it or have discretionary funds to fund it. When we first started this agreement, the district backbone the entire setup, and then we were reimbursed by the city and the town for their contributions to the system.
And so do you, would you look for an action from us to help with that financing, some sort of declaration or support? Or how can we help support the funding?
I would, from my standpoint, I would need to take it back to my board and allocate funding for it, as I think both the councils would have to do as well. So if it would be a recommendation from this group to say, yes, we want to pursue it, rejuvenate this system with the latest technology to reactivate it, I think that's an appropriate action.
We could strongly encourage those three entities to proceed in that fashion.
Yes. But I'm not sure you can do it in this.
It's not an, it's not an action item, but we can certainly strongly encourage.
And if it violates the Brown Act, we can undo it.
And I'll definitely talk to, I'll talk to the police chiefs and the town manager.
Yeah.
People on the council that were in the real estate business, and they wanted, they didn't want to see tsunami signs and went through all that stuff.
Right. So the only live activation we had of the sirens was the tsunami. And everyone in Southern Marin had a comment that, wow, it brought my attention to what was happening. And then everyone watched the wave go through Richardson Bay. And it was, that was, we got a lot of kudos for that.
I was at the, I was at the Sausalito fuel dock, and then all of it went off. And we came out, went over to his little home. And then I turned to my friend, and I said, well, what do you think? He goes, well, it's not a problem now. That was the tsunami. You can go out in the ocean.
Oh, boy.
So we went out in the ocean. We encountered some bigger waves than that.
And if you were in Fukushima Daiichi, you really would have hit your boat a little bit over there. Other questions or other comments?
I just want to say thank you. That's fantastic. And it sounds like it's a great price. And whatever support we can give you from this Disaster Council, we will. So I think we can try to do a motion.
So technically, we're not supposed to, because it's not an action item. But if we had to, if you needed the full support of the Disaster Council officially on the record, we could certainly have an emergency meeting, post an agenda, make it an action item. But I think Dr. Cromwell said, you know, we can strongly encourage our councils and our town manager and our everybody to support this.
Chair would entertain that sort of encouragement in a unanimous fashion from this board.
Yeah, I do, I do think that the chair, I do think that the chair could write that the, the, the board strongly encouraged this. And that would be something that our chair could write to Belvedere and Tiburon and whoever else would be helpful to our chief Pierce. And I would like to see that happen.
I think that. But I'd like to move that we ask the chair to consider, to take that action.
So because it's not on the agenda for action, it's only on for discussion, we can only ask through discussion. We can't actually take action on the item today because of the Brown Act. So that we can't make a motion. We can make a strong encouragement that is like a motion, but it's not a motion motion.
Help the council, if it helped the council, I would just reach out to my manager partners, and we could make this with strong support.
All right. Thank you.
When you do present this, and you know, there's no reason we can't just write a letter to them, to the effect that we strongly encourage it. And I will do that.
Thank you, Dr. Cromwell.
And convey that also to whatever groups you presented to, if you would.
I think the other piece of it, we really feel like the, this was, the district helped champion this years and years and years ago. But I think this really needs to live at the EOC piece and at the county EOC, because that's where that, everything's gonna be happening. That's where that unified command is gonna be. And I think the district should probably separate itself from that piece of it.
And, you know, there's no, no question that we as a community need to continue and move forward on redundancy in our, some way or other, or several ways of alerting the population. So we'll do that.
And thank you for doing all this research and finding this, because that's the best deal I've seen.
Yeah.
And Rich MIRA is finally up and running.
MIRA is up and running. The only piece that we're looking at right now, and probably be taken care of by tomorrow, is the fire station alerting. There was some glitches. But we're on the Next Gen system, and it's pretty.
MIRA for, MIRA is, stands for Marin Emergency.
Radio Authority.
Radio Authority. And Rich, you were head of that for a while, weren't you?
Still am.
Still are? Really? But you're only two years now behind.
Okay, we had COVID and a bunch of other things go sideways on us.
Well, thank you for getting that off the ground. And that was what, twenty million dollars or?
Seventy-two million.
Well, that should be good for us for a number of years.
I hope so.
Other questions about any of that stuff? Yes, Jane.
Could you please clarify when you said the forty-one thousand nine hundred covered six sirens, and then you said five sirens? I didn't catch that.
So there was a siren at Bel Air School that we had originally placed. It has subsequently been replaced by Southern Marin Fire District with an LRAD. So we wouldn't have to maintain.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Okay, any comments in the audience? Any comments from the diocese? Adam, you had another issue you not really go on. Okay. Forget it. Yeah, if you feel compelled to do so, go ahead.
I would like to make a motion that we thank our presenters today, thank our fellow council members, and Laurie specifically, and make a motion that we adjourn.
Well, that's, that's something new and different. That's very formal. Thank you. All right, we are, thank you all for coming.